Okay, it's next to me now. Stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. First official meeting of the year. Before I go through the agenda, I do want to, if there are no objections from the committee, in the interest of saving Annie's time, I don't want to have her sit through the whole meeting of 30 policies. So do you guys mind if I move the field feasibility study to after the approval of the minutes? So definitely, okay, so we're gonna do Annie's. Yeah. I appreciate it. You're welcome. Okay, so with that, alright, do I have a motion to approve?
First what?
Oh, do you wanna go through it?
Yeah.
Well, see, and we never put it out of the agenda. It's like, see, I was just sitting in the middle of the age.
Alright, so new step.
Right. We got them all.
We have quite a few steps, but tonight joining us, we have Anna Doherty, a fifth grade math and science teacher. She's partnered with Amy Sausick. Although she's new to Burgess, and she is not new to Tantasco Union 61. She was a Burgefield teacher for quite some time. We welcome her. Next, we have Jane Minard. Jane Minard is an ABA integration assistant within one of our substantially separate classrooms. She also has a background in speech and language pathology. Speech and language pathology assistant. And next, we have Erin Mezakar. Erin joins us as an assistant in kindergarten. She is paired with Krista Starfer this year. And Erin has a long tradition at Burgess. She has two children who are Burgess alumni. We welcome them to Burgess.
Welcome. Thank you.
Okay, now.
I know. It's a little bit of a delay.
So I have the approval of the minutes grounded in regular session, June 5th, 2023 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? We have a second.
Second. Holland, David.
And you did have one more meeting the end of June. We had our virtual one almost on the 11th hour to vote. I totally forgot about that meeting until the packet was already out. So I have sent my chicken scratch notes to Karen, and we'll have minutes for next month.
Okay, that's perfect. Okay, so we are moving on to Ms. Russell Lee.
Hello. Thank you for having me tonight. I guess this will be a little bit more of an introductory conversation on the project that we've just started exploring, or I guess the concept we've started exploring that we hope to bring to you guys as a completed project. So this spring, we had received funding through ARPA to begin looking at the feasibility, if it's possible to convert the multi-use field up here to turf. ARPA has been wonderful because it's a great way to explore projects that we wouldn't have funding otherwise. So this was a perfect fit for it. We have completed some of the testing, but we're not all the way there yet. So in terms of, I'm happy to answer any questions that I can, but we're still waiting on a lot of feedback. So over the summer, we had our existing condition survey completed. This fall, we'll have the borings. That would be really crucial to knowing if this project can move forward or not. But the concepts, so our project team has been myself, Paul, Kathy, In-N-Out, just at the beginning. And then our town administrator is actually really interested, so she's hopped in all of our meetings. The idea is to convert the field to the full 360 by 200 turf. It would leave the Little League and softball field there, but convert those over to turf. So the infield's that were redone, that was necessary in buying more time for usage. But that material can actually be reused at our other fields in town. So the both of the lower fields, when it's time for that clay material to get scooped up, this new material can go down. And so the best field practice is always having a stockpile of that field material to replace, which Paul actually just taught all of us learning from redoing the infield. So it's a whole, we've kind of taken all the steps into consideration. There's definitely, you know, process. We're slow moving in terms of waiting for all the test results to come back. And I like to go a little bit faster than this. My printout here is really just more of an aerial view. I'm a visual learner, so sometimes it's easier to speak about. But the, so I guess finally, this field would, yes, be able to be used for recess, which is already just a question we keep getting asked a lot from people who are like hearing about this project. The scheduling would stay through Burgess. We've discussed as well what it would look like for maintenance. The maintenance really is once a year, a one-day activity. So most likely, Burgess staff would be trained. If not, that's something we would see if DPW can take on. But our last conversation, we were kind of discussing maintenance more and what that consists of. So very loosely speaking, we are kind of leaning towards the custodial staff here. We'll prefer once-a-year maintenance versus the daily mowing and all the other upkeep that they have to do. So it sounds like that will stay with Burgess, but if not, it would go through the town. All of this would be discussed and planned as we get there. So recreation, we've been speaking about this slowly. The committee is fully on board, and we have their support to keep looking into this. And I guess that's kind of the full overview of how we got here and where we're at. I'm happy to kind of answer any questions, to narrow down the scope or see what the committee has in mind.
What does the maintenance look like, the once-a-year maintenance? What does that consist of?
I can get specifics on that. In terms, so the equipment and training for it comes with the purchase of the field.
Yep, okay.
So it's a one-time purchase, the training, it's, all that cost is upfront. In terms of specifically what that maintenance is, that's the answer. I'm happy to get back to you, but I don't even want to try to guess the wording on that.
Sure. And then for, as far as for Burgess, taking over that once-a-year maintenance or the DPW, what would that process be if Burgess doesn't do it? Do we have to get approval, or do we just go to Robin, the town administrator?
In terms of releasing maintenance?
Yeah.
That's something that I think we would have, that whole process will have to figure out beforehand because most likely that would be written in detail at town meeting vote. It would probably all be, I guess, I would imagine that that portion of it would have to be included in the town meeting vote if there's any transfer.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, and not to be the skunk at the long party, but I'm always in devil's advocate or risk management mode, depending on what you wanna call it. So I will just try to throw out my experiences or questions that come to mind that Amy can help keep on the table as we go forward, as I know a little bit about maintaining at the schools. Now, the fields at the schools are an organic fill. I don't know where we'd end up. I will say, it is not a once-a-year maintenance. The machines, the machine, it's almost like a vacuum to pluff up the carpet. So that is not a once-a-year situation. What we get, what we look at once a year, the companies would do it once a year. We're really more like every two or three years, is evaluating the fill. And sometimes there's more fill that needs to be added, which is not cheap. But the general maintenance, yes, the machines were part of the purchase and installation, and the staff was trained. We have groundskeepers that were trained. It's just not once a year. It's probably every couple of weeks, once a month, depending on how much use and how severe. And it's sort of a fluffing situation that you would want to keep the carpet going. And again, I can get more information as to how long that process takes. But unless something is significantly different from the fields up there, which were only installed six years ago, they definitely have a little more activity than the once-a-year. The once-a-year, I think, is sort of, doesn't need more fill.
Yeah, and I'm happy to get more details on that. I'm assuming the high school will be a little bit different in terms of compaction rates.
Yep.
But going into it, it's great to know. So we'll get a realistic. I have a meeting, so the Auburn Athletic Director has been wonderful. They've converted all of their fields. I have a meeting with him pretty soon, last week in September, to see what the real life has been for them versus the sales pitch.
I'm sorry, I just have one more, sorry. So if something happens to this field, such as the divots, we need to re-turf, we have to lift it up, where does that fall? I guess, I don't know who I'm asking here.
Well, I mean, those of you have to be conversations.
Or is that for town meeting, or is that in part of the planning? Like who, what budget, I guess, is what I'm asking. Is that gonna come out of? Like, I know the maintenance is included, but I guess I'm just concerned, does that come out of town budget? Or would that come out of Burgess budget?
It would be structured. So this is something that Paul was very clear, kind of speaking for everyone, through and through town budget. So that A could, the downside is slowing us down if there was an issue having go-to-town meeting. Sometimes there are emergency committees we can go to, but it would be structured. So at no point should the funding be coming out of the school budget.
So we're starting with ARPA funds?
Yes.
But then, that of course will be, it's time.
Is the ARPA for the feasibility, is that all they offer for the feasibility study?
Yes.
Just the feasibility.
Yeah.
And then the remaining funding, so I was thinking something similar, would be coming from the town budget.
Most likely, yes. So most likely, we would take this project to CPC and see if it falls within their parameters.
What if it's a school?
Right.
I think it's like December you're thinking for town meeting, right?
This would be for June.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, for this project, because we'll need, we're not there in terms of, we still have a lot more testing to do. We'll have to have some informational nights, make sure all the information is out there is clear.
What's the meeting in December?
Well, there might be a special town meeting, but this project wouldn't be ready for it.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
So this doesn't actually bring us any more field space, correct?
Right.
No.
Yeah. Nope.
And I know, like, with the high school, if I wanna bring my kids to throw lacrosse ball, we're locked out.
That's gonna be something for the administration and us, I believe.
But it's worth having the conversations. Have them now, or have them at your open forums.
Just like, hey, like as a parent, I have to.
You have to know, our concerns would be, we, Tantasco does, can't let any public use of the fields happen during the school day, which extends to the after-school sports. So we need to remember and know, you do get challenged when you do this, but you're on school grounds, and it's during the school day, and folks might wanna come and use the field during the day, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't be comfortable with that.
What about after weekend either, I'm saying?
Right, well, that then becomes, and I'm very curious, I don't know how Auburn handles it. Because I don't know what their agreement is to have public access on weekends, what their rec department does to monitor, or if they're just open, full access.
Yeah, I'm concerned with both sides, I guess.
Right, so that's what we'll have to get more answers to.
More money spending, and then I'm concerned with, okay, I can't bring my kids here to play.
Yeah.
Like, I don't wanna lose that.
Yeah, and who will monitor that? Which is something we don't wanna have to monitor or be responsible for opening or closing beyond it's the school day.
Sorry. Can I just tell on Jen, I'm sorry, Jackie. Just thinking about, is part of the study like a neighborhood impact? Because when we talked early on, we talked about maybe not having more fields to use, but having the ability to light the field, to have more hours of utilization. Which, at the time, I expressed my concern to our neighbors, what does that do for them? And so, does the study include any impact, neighborhood impact?
Not this beginning portion. So that's, that would kind of be our next step, requirements that planning board has. That's where those submittals come. But the benefits of this location is, well, A, your lights are not really gonna be on late at night, where it's not gonna affect any neighbor, but your eight o'clock practices, you're safe getting off the field, you're safe at desk play, getting to your car. But we don't have the neighbors in comparison to the other areas that we're exploring.
Other projects, right. And I just wouldn't want us to get far, you know, if this were to go forward, you'd wanna know that before we got to.
Yeah, and it remains for use sport, so it's not going to be on until 10 o'clock at night. It's, you know, it still needs to be appropriate for the age groups that are using it.
So we wouldn't use it, no adult leagues would be able to use it then? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, so it would be, it fits through high school regulation size. So it will give tackle football actually a space to play in, so it's wonderful. But beyond that, it's not designed for any adult leagues. In terms of, they have some of the same dimensions, so, I mean, it wouldn't be ruled out, but if the concern is your weeknight usage or how late you're using it, we don't need to design adult leagues.
I think the concern is the usability of it, of the community using it on a regular basis.
Yeah.
Rather than, like.
And you're bringing in more teams to less space, right? And now you're talking about bringing tackle football in, where we don't have enough space for flag football and soccer and softball and all the other sports. So it's basically like you're just adding more people.
Those are community taxpayer questions. As a school committee, you wanna make sure you don't interrupt with your school operations. Either interrupt during your school day, which includes after-school extended day programs, and/or your staff doing anything more than they do now.
So is that why?
So that's, I mean, I think that's what our lens needs to be. But all of these questions, I would think the community and the public will ask in public forums.
Yeah.
And I would, I just feel like our lens needs to constantly be, what's the impact to our staff? And are we okay with that?
So is.
But I get as a community member, I'm like, well, what's the use gonna be able to be? As school committee, we just can't interfere. We can't have use when school's in session. We need to have that kind of safety barrier. But what school can do is father, as far as either physically maintaining or administering, are things that we should say, what are the asks and the expectations? And what would that take for time? Are we okay with it?
Right, if I think the multiple use feeds into a budget, that's more maintenance too. So for me, that's a budget question.
Which, again, yeah, that ongoing maintenance, if the town is committed its, cost of product is probably not an issue during the year. It's who does the work and how much time does that take? The product cost, ask these truths of the refill, because that does get costly, which I'm feeling comfortable is not gonna be asked of schools. The only other time though, honestly, that there has been a cost to repair, because they don't have divots. What they do have, if not managed, and I'd love to know other schools, is damage. Car gets on field and tries to run circles on fields. The carpet gets damaged. They come in and cut the sections of the carpet and replace. That's a cost. We've had that once in seven years. What's the other one?
The wrinkles.
We had banned, that's a flood totally.
Is the purpose of today's presentation to inform us of the study and where things stand? Or is it to get, like, what would you, I understand the.
I think it's both. You were asking for an update on it, which I didn't even know was happening. So knowing where it stands, but your opportunity to say, yeah, we're okay going forward with this feasibility study, but these are the questions that need to be answered during the feasibility study. Because otherwise, you're gonna get to a point where you're going to need to vote to allow the use of, because the school committee has control of all grounds.
Right.
So are you okay allowing this project?
Can I ask one that is within the lens? So kids can use it for recess. What about in the wintertime when there is snow on there? Typically, kids at school can't play in the snow unless they have snow pants in their boots and whatnot. Is that something that is, like, are kids allowed to go on the turf with snow on it? Or is that going to be damaging, or?
That would probably be up to the school to decide when they want to have it closed or open and how they wanna maintain it. It would follow what you do currently. You wouldn't need to clear it during the winter for any outdoor sport. So it would be, it'd kind of be whatever your outdoor resource dynamic is now.
Because I'm thinking like, high school sports can't go until the turf is clear, right? Like, no one's allowed.
Because you don't, you don't.
Right. So I can't answer that question, because I don't know if it would damage the field using, what the wear and tear with snow on top of it, would that?
With kids playing and, you know, digging and doing, you know, what kids do.
And I don't know, I can't answer that too, so I suppose it's a vendor question. If there's four or five inches of snow on it, can people be running around in the snow? I don't know. That isn't something that.
And is it the whole upper field? So there is not a portion of it that doesn't have the turf that the kids could be, it's across the whole field?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that way, because there's not a way to maintain the both. And then if you have it too close to each other, you have the risk of clogging your irrigation system. Right. So we, there's a top corner that will provide a little warm-up area for them that's turf.
Okay, so I think that would be helpful to know if anybody can be on top of it with snow.
Yeah.
I did have a couple of other questions, just in terms of, so it sounds like if fill is required, that would come out of the town's budget? Is that what we're understanding?
Yep, everything for the project would be town's budget.
And then, have you gotten any sense of what the lifespan of turf is? Like, how often are we gonna have to think about finding funds to, not the school finding funds?
Yeah, again, it would go back to that purchasing level. You'd be back to town meeting. We have, if you're, I'm also happy, I have a lot of resources that I can send you to the email for specific. All of the FAQs from the last turf project are still on the rec website, so all the specifics are there. I want to say it was eight years, but I don't wanna speak incorrectly. So I would prefer to send you kind of the FAQ sheet after, if we're gonna get into the nitty-gritty with the turf, just to make sure for late accurately.
Okay, my concern with that would be that if the town doesn't then support replacing the turf in eight years, then we're not, now we have, then we have no fields for kids to really be on. So just making sure that if we get into it.
Yeah, and then first, again, ask the other towns. Because what the vendors will say is the life.
Yeah, we have a lot of comparisons on the website.
Is driven by how often they want the carpet replaced, which I think can be a little longer.
Yeah.
Depending on the wear and tear. I think it's a bit longer than that, but I do recall them saying that. The shorter the time is, the more often there's an actual project happening. Because that's a significant project to pull up the old, they suck up all the fill, then they pull up the old carpet, and then they lay down. So that's just something to remember. And again, if it always gets done during the summer, awesome, except for those who actually wanna be using it during the summer. So the tighter the turnaround, or the more often it's expected to be done, is the more often you have those projects.
So that's helpful to know.
Eight years, 10 years, 12 years.
That would be helpful to know as well, in terms of, if the project moves forward, how long does it take for them to actually put it down? How long are we without fields?
Yeah.
And can that be done over the summer? The other question I had was surrounding fencing. So, you know, if the project moves forward, does it include a fence that fences in and can be locked, the whole thing? Or is it open?
Yeah, it includes a fencing, so expanding, updating what is currently there. It includes the lighting.
And then, maybe not a question for you, but when we were talking about the concern of people being here late at night, lights being on, and we currently have signage that the school is, school grounds are closed and adjusted. So unless we change that.
We'd have to see what the project is and that, right, depending on the scope of the project, then change the rules. But again, it becomes a question of how late are the fields accessible to the community?
So you're thinking like in the parking lot? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, that, yeah.
Because that's actually.
Even so, Little League has the lights right now, and they're, if a game runs late and they're pushing bodies, it's too late for the decision to get them down there. So it would really be based off of, we did have rules. Scheduled and developed.
Right.
But you're not going to have them on the field at 8:30.
They talked a little bit about locking the field. I mean, obviously, during the weekdays, during school weekdays, it's not a problem because we have staff here that could do that. But is that something that we would expect the boards to take on as we move forward?
In terms of, like, locking and unlocking? So I think that's something that we should have longer discussion about. There's different ways to approach it. Some of, in my personal opinion, the best that I have seen yet for schools that are trying to have private usage separate from public free-for-all, is set times for public usage. So you know when it's unlocked and when it's locked. There's different options for padlock keys, and then you're distributing it to presidents and certain coaches. If there's issues, obviously, you'd address it after. But there's, I've been looking at how different community structure it. For myself, for rec committee, what's really important is that this doesn't go in and get locked right up and be really hard to get into. So that's how we were starting to look at different, so set days, set times of, it would be open play, but it's still monitored by, say, rec department, something that's scheduled in, so you have the same timeframe weekly.
Have you talked to any towns that leave it open? Where we're not locking it? Does that certainly simplifies things, even if we post public hours?
Yes. So if you go a little bit more west, it's a lot more that is unlocked. That's something that rec committee is definitely leaning towards, but it seems like that's something that the school may not be leaning towards. So we were not expecting.
Well, that's just, that's when you get your vandalism risk. And that's, again, the couple times we had have been the midnight cars that try to get on the field.
Exactly.
And a couple of, there's been a couple of paintings. There was a couple of years ago, it was actually a town, row, all of our communities, that there was this.
We have, we have.
I was gonna say, does this project include cameras?
We have Fabio's camera security right now. We, I can see that hotel very clearly, you know? So, I mean, our security cameras at this time are state-of-the-art and top-notch, so.
Which helps. Big difference getting cameras down at the rec area.
That's, that's. Maybe help.
So Kathy, right now, right now, the fields are not, they're not fully fenced? Should we have vandalism issues at the moment?
Not tremendous, no, no. I'd say very little, actually. Where we see issues is actually on the playgrounds and the parking lots as opposed to on the fields. We've had things, but in 10 years, we can probably count on one thing.
Now, do we know the, I mean, I know from playing on turf how brutal we had it is compared to the grass. Are there any studies for like temperature difference on, say, in a 90-degree day in the sun, grass versus turf?
There's a lot of information out there on that. The coconut and cork infill plays cooler, and we have the irrigation system, so we can wet and cool the field. So there's, seems to be more benefits than not.
How would we be allowed to do that with a water ban that we seem to have every year, but this year? I mean, at the beginning, we did, but. Because I would be concerned with the temperature. I mean, kids at recess, you know, like you get your kids playing on the turf, you know, with soccer and lacrosse and with other sports, they're complaining their feet are burning when the turf is very hot, so.
The gym, the gym.
Yeah. You know, burning through crops, because most, you know, a lot of kids don't wear their sneakers for gym, and so.
Yeah, it's already, a benefit to the project is how cleared out it already is, like the black and shades.
To expand on that too, I'd like to know what the fill is. You mentioned like cork versus coconut and whatever, but I would like to know what the fill is and any health risks associated with it.
Yeah, so that would be something that gets, like, last time for the project, we were leaning towards GeoFill. That was already a couple of years ago. It's 90% coconut, 10% cork. If you go onto the rec website, all of the FAQs, all of the brochures, specifically for GeoFill, but it references some others there as well.
That's what Tantasco asked, June, so it was kind of early on too.
Do we have any more questions?
Where are the rec website, well, so we can.
Recreation field projects, I believe it's labeled. If you're looking on your phone, you might have to scroll quite a bit.
Okay.
But I'm happy to link all of that to you after. It has, it's, the website is still set up for the 60-seater street project, but all of those attachments have all of this relevant information. So knowing these discussions were coming up, we've just left it out.
I think I have it, thank you. If this were to all go, what is the timeframe? You may have already said that, like, when would we expect construction to start and be completed?
I think that would be a question a little bit more for the engineers, once we get to that. We have to still foresee, I know the borings will give us a lot more insight to the project, and that will be done late fall, but if we have an early winter, that won't be done till early spring. Timeline would be, hopefully, to take this to CPC for funding around the wintertime. That's when we would be submitting for warrants. Ideally, June town meeting, for, let's say, general all approvals. We would bid it over the summer, and then have to get on the construction timeline from them.
Right, so it would start during school year.
Do they have a rough schedule?
Maybe another year.
If we, depending on the construction timelines and the leadways, but I wouldn't, being realistic, if we were awarded the money in June, there's no way they're starting with construction in fall. I think we'd be lucky if with the leadends and everything.
Taking the summer just to, just to put together the bid packet, maybe.
Yeah, so I think it's very realistic to plan for it to happen over the summer.
Do they have a rough site?
Yes.
Summer 2025.
Well, and see, poor Rainey, we're peppering you with questions that the feasibility study will actually.
Yeah.
A lot of our questions is the whole point of the feasibility study. And I think I just wanted you to come together and hear all the questions in case any of those that weren't planning on looking at. But I do know that a lot of those are things that feasibility will come back and say, this can be, and this is what the overall plan, or what could be done or couldn't be done.
Yes, and we'll have, with the school committee, we'll have the engineer come in. And we'll have, with the school committee, we'll have the engineer come in, our landscape architect come in, who can answer all these specifics. We're just not there yet.
Okay, does anyone else have any other questions?
As always, you did a really good job with all the questions.
Thank you. If you have any others along the way, I mean, the more questions the better because they're going to come up at some time.
Exactly.
I think it was really good for the town to start these discussions with the 60 Cedar Street because we had informational meetings. We learned a lot about turf, the residents were able to learn more and have their opinions voiced. So it won't be the first time that it's being discussed at the town meeting. It's just hopefully a much more feasible project. But as we get updates, they'll be shared with the school. I really don't expect any next up updates until the borings have been completed. So it's just a slower timeline.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're moving on to the financial report.
Oh, boy. Well, the good news is what's in your packet is the end of last year. So you haven't gotten all of this year in, but I will queue you up to a little bit. So all, last year is just showing, and the reminder that what this is showing is $13,000 left slash turned back to the town. After, they gave us $200,000 more. So that budget number would be with the $200,000 from the town meeting. So we, we ended pretty close to how we expected. There's a few things we were able to prepay for this year, which I'll get to in a second. I apologize because what is not in this packet and I thought would be, I missed. I, I, next month we'll have the SR3 money that's left. So, so we're having discussions and plans. We're really very nicely on par with what our plan was two and a half years ago to get through and not have huge clips to get off of. About half of SR3 funds we spent last year and the other half will be this year. We got off of some of the staffing in SR3 so that we can make, you know, one final look at any other technology. There's a little bit of staff left there that we need to plan for next budget, the priorities. But I will make sure next month you have, you'll have where we are for the new year and also the SR3 status. I can't promise that we'll have by next month. I hope soon after that we'll have, if we're getting any rural aid, what that will be. We didn't get notified of that until last October, so, and that's a crucial number. As I segue into just giving you a glimpse of the current year budget. So for current year, we are starting again with significant out of district tuition shortfall, which I might have, I think I whispered last June. Kathy and I met last week. There were another three placements since this budget. One is a residential placement. We, and, and, and here's the thing, we just had a number of really good years. When I started, there was, there were two residential placements for a while, then they aged out and we had a number of years with none. Now, one of our big problems last year was one and there's another one that we've got to take care of this year.
How close are they to, I mean, are they like little, little, they got like 15 years or we've got like?
Ooh, is one a lot?
Blood 17.
Okay. So, and again, remember, I don't know the severity of the needs. It could be something that's a graduation in 18, but we could have service until 22. So I do know the most recent residential is not an elementary student, so that's what little hope I can give us, right? So we sat down and we were looking at another, starting the year off, don't panic, $400,000 shortfall. A, we prepaid about $40,000 to $50,000 of special ed tuitions last June that we had. So we asked for 200. We probably could have turned back 50,000 or so, but we used it to do what we can legally prepay tuitions for the collaborative and our internal. So that it builds us a cliff for next year, but right now I'm just looking at trying to get through this year. Just as we talk about getting through this year, we have to remember, most of these tuitions are going to be here again next year. So we're already starting with a problem and we're going to talk in November about whether we're going to pull in our finance committee a little early again this year. So we'll see. But we took care of that and we had Circuit Breaker previous balance of $100,000 that we could put towards it. So I think when we last were, meaning last week, we were, we were in about a $200,000, what do we do? We're not going to panic yet because we're waiting for three things. I do think we will qualify for a little bit extraordinary relief from Circuit Breaker. It'll take us a little bit to see what our Circuit Breaker payments are in September to know and be able to calculate. We don't know what rural aid will be and that is something that's not planned in your budget at all. So whatever it is, we can use it to put towards this problem, I know. Optimistically, I mean, it's little. Again, I don't, Sturbridge doesn't qualify for a lot of rural aid. Last year was the first time, I think it was like $25,000 or $30,000. The pool of dollars in the budget is much larger for rural aid. That doesn't mean Sturbridge will get much more because their calculation will let more communities in that, well, like at Level 3, but they didn't have enough money before to fund Level 3 or fully fund. So we're, again, we're waiting until October. And then the last pool of dollars is that SR3 that, that we can use either to pay some tuitions directly or to pay for things that are in the budget that then allows us to pay for it. So we left our meeting last week feeling like, okay, we can get through this year. It's really just keeping track of what, what one-time reserve funds are we using to get through this year? And preparing for what the budget will be next year. So we'll have a better picture, we'll get here next month and we have the new year's financials in front of you and we'll go from there. But I needed to at least queue you both down, queue you up on that. Is that it for current year? Now we're going to try and go more optimistic, positive.
Okay, so now we are moving on to communications.
There was none other than me communicating with you guys as much as possible.
So now we're on to the principals report.
Welcome back, everyone. Off to a great start in my estimation. Just a couple of things. Enrollment, our enrollment figure was taken too early in August. Our actual current enrollment is at 879, not 859.
Where do those two additional fall?
No, she's looking at 23.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
The first one there.
I'm sorry. So we had, we had 50, we currently have 57 newly enrolled students and 22 withdrawn students. So we have a definite increase in the newly enrolled students. We're, past couple of years it's been that way. Previously, we would almost see like a split, where it was very similar, the number of students coming in and the numbers of students leaving out of our school. So this is a, past two years we've seen an uptick of that.
They're still coming back from homeschooling or, or moving in and settling.
Yep, I'm sorry. I think that's bad on that. Okay, just want to recognize our custodial staff, admin assistants, building technologists, food service staff and the entire Burgess staff for all their hard work in preparing for the 23, 24 school year. It was a rather heavy lift this year. We do have some shortages in our custodial staffings, so just keep that in mind. Want to thank Jamie Disjardt and Bethany Wolfing and the summer program staff for providing engaging learning opportunities for hundreds of students. It was wonderful to have full programming go and Jenny, you can weigh in on that as well. Staff changes, quite a few. We have retirements, Nadine Kevell, Alicia Peck, Beth Ramirez, Karen Dauber, Teresa Thompson, Laurie Placella and Leslie Bork, all retired. We had some resignations, some of our staff going on to further education. Botini, Abby, Jamie, Carrie, Jill and Catherine. Change of assignments, quite a few. We had lots of folks requesting, when folks retired, we have existing staff ask for a change of assignment and we go through a process of granting that. Abigail Glazbrook went from an ABA integration assistant to a kindergarten teacher. Laurie Check went from kindergarten teacher to preschool teacher. Kaylee Steele from grade five teacher to grade two teacher. Dan Corthelf actually from consulting teacher to, for integration to a grade five teacher. Dan Kay from a special education grade four teacher to a grade, a grade four teacher. Sally Thurston, grade five teacher to grade four teacher. Lisa Conley from academic tester to grade four special education teacher. Laurie Thompson from grade two teacher to health teacher. Megan Moran from grade five special education teacher to the gain substantially separate program teacher. And Delaney Johnson, who has been an administration, an integration assistant to the beyond step long-term teacher for long-term self-position. New hires, Grace Champagne, grade two teacher. Anna Doherty, grade five teacher from Athens Science. Heather Bell, her English learner teacher. Caroline Blake, school adjustment counselor psychologist. Brooke Riley, occupational therapist. Margaret Arnt as integration assistant. Simone Davis as occupational therapist for Tantascwee Union 61. Erin Mizikar for education assistant. Jane Minard as ABA integration assistant and Abby Trent as education assistant. So lots of staff changes, but we're a big staff, right? So that's, that's it in a nutshell. Opening day orientation and open house, lots has, lots has happened in the past couple of days. First day for grades one through six was Wednesday, August 30th. As was screening of 25 kindergarten students, which that number is growing bigger and bigger every year when we have families who aren't registering their children at the, you know, the earlier times that we offer. So we're looking at things we need to do. We do a lot of advertising, we do a lot of outreach. You know, we've talked a lot about maybe looking at some social media pieces and trying to, you know, attract more attention that way. So we had to screen those children on Wednesday and place them in order for their, their families and the students to attend open house and orientation, which happens on the 31st. Tuesday was the first day for kindergarten. That went very well. I do like the staggered start. It really does help a school this size to get things up and running. First day of school for preschool is Monday, the 11th. Orientation for preschool, we had some sessions today and some sessions, two sessions tomorrow. An open house will be held on Wednesday, September 13th. And I will publicly apologize because we are in conflict with the high school's open house and that was an oversight.
And I will say Murphy's Law just keeps kicking us. This is a snafu on, on two ends, so.
There are not too many of us with kindergartners or third graders in high school.
And it, I, I, I just found it last night when I got an understandable email from a parent upset and had not, I have not seen it. It wasn't on our radar and it, it's partly procedural. We start out, we start doing the calendar in Marjorie. Starts at the high school, fill in all the dates, move it to the next school, send it out. It was just, I think it was twofold. Full disclosure, the high school snuck an early, a, a, a week off because last year, first thing this morning I wanted to look. Last year it was a week earlier. The high school was this week last year. So when they went to fill in their dates, they filled in a date a week later. But by the time it got to Burgess, Burgess didn't fill that in. Because I, as I said to my friends at the high school, Burgess didn't fill their date in on the district calendar. If they had, we would have been duking this out in the spring, last spring. But it just all snuck through, so we're going to figure out how to make sure anyone who has.
Hopefully the flexibility of our event will make it, you know.
It's kind of exciting, I've got to tell you, to go from like third grade to what the sophomores are doing. My head will spin a little bit, but it does.
I think my only, my only, and I'm going to, I'm going to, I need to get the high school to be, the only challenge is usually what happens at the high school is the students have four blocks, so they kind of run through the schedule and say, for 10 minutes you can go to each of it. So that, it'd be different if it was a open, literally open house drop-in. You could go to the high school for an hour and you could go to Burgess for an hour. But we'll certainly be prepared to hear any parents who feel bad that they can't get to certain teachers and say, teachers need to be prepared.
Or staff who have kids at either school.
Yeah.
And then on to other things. We do have a math pilot going on. It's going to be an interesting year. Kindergarten through grade five. We have half of our teams working with the Go Math program and the other half using the Burgess program. There's been training provided and we're optimistic that we'll come out with a good program when we're done. Professional development, we had a great opening day. Superintendent Boyd did her address. Carrie Slack is certified life coach, provided uplifting messages to staff. The remainder of the day, as well as Tuesday, was spent on grade level and department meetings, trainings and preparatory time for staff. The two-day start, I have to tell you, I think, I don't know if folks can weigh in, just really helped, especially a school the size of Burgess to be able to get, I had opportunity to meet with all of our teams, which in a, you know, in a much lengthier fashion. We're usually running like 10 minutes, just touching base with everybody. And we were allowed, you know, I had opportunity to meet for 20 to 30 minutes with each, with each grade level and each department. And then they were able to address any of the new students coming in. You know, they don't have that information when they go, when they come in on the first day. We get that to them, they have opportunity to prepare for new students coming. They have the opportunity to meet collaboratively with their teams. And I really feel that it set a very good tone. Does anybody want to weigh in? Do you agree the two-day start, the two days at the beginning, front ending? Was that advantageous?
Send them on Friday.
I can feel it already, I'm already persevering. These will be conversations we'll all have in November. When we have the joint meeting and, and you all talk about, oh, we will, we will recommend a calendar for next year. It is too early, but I'm happy Mrs. Kelly gives her way in and you should hear it. And I will be asking all of the principals for their opinions. It's also a little early, we want to get to October, we can take that full day. Unfortunately, we have to make a decision by November about next year's calendar. I'd rather wait until January or February when we find out for sure how much we miss that additional PD day in the middle of the year. We're, we're going to have to use whatever information we have and make votes in November and then we'll go from there.
Just one question about the math. How does that assessment happen in terms of like a decision being made school-wide? Is it going to the math interventionist?
Well, it will, but actually it is a Union 61 decision. Assistant Superintendent Barasa is leading this and she will be, will be taking the, taking input from the teachers. And that will be translated to our coaches and to Assistant Superintendent Barasa.
Any questions, Mrs. Kelly?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we are moving on to Mrs. Boyd, superintendent.
Alrighty. I have to say, usually the principal takes the wind out of my sail. I'm so excited because I, I still have things.
You're going to be upset.
Huh?
You're going to be disappointed.
So first and, I mean, first and foremost, we want to thank the Sturbridge Police Department for their stuffed the cruiser of those.
Yes.
Yep.
That was cool.
So, I know, they had, they had a great stuffed cruiser. Brought all of, emptied their cruiser into the superintendent's conference room first, where we kind of had a little shopping expedition and divided through the Sturbridge schools, a majority of it came back here yesterday maybe for Mrs. Kelly to be work with her staff and distribute as they feel best, so that we, we like working with our police department. I know it's been hot the last couple of days for those that are not in this building. I am so sorry, we're cruising, we're pushing through tomorrow. We're just going to push through and hope it goes down. Opening day was awesome. You know, I loved getting everyone together and we did have what I think was an entertaining, yet really hopeful.
I knew this was in your report.
Really helpful presenter. Before that, so traditionally opening day, whole staff gets into the auditorium and the principals, I introduce the principals and they introduce the new staff. So that we can applaud them for making the right decision and coming to us and be recognized. What I added this year, and I did say I hope it is a continued tradition, is to also recognize staff that have served us for many years. So I will run through quickly that I did ask stand and recognize staff that have worked over 25 years in, in this district. Between 25 and 30 years was Don Kurboy, classroom assistant, Grace Kernow, your guidance. Lucy Caldwell cheated a little bit because she gets credit for being at Tantascwee.
Lucy Caldwell cheated a little bit because she gets credit for being at Tantascway, but she's served our collective district for over 25 years. Al Dion, your custodian. Your assistant principal, Mary Jager. Maureen Kenaway, teacher, classroom assistants. Pat Nicola and Jen Fasetti. And teachers, Joel Infrento and Erin Parker. Over 30 years, Brenda Blair and Wendy McRoy from Transportation, your coordinator and assistant. Teachers Denise Campiglio and Judy Concolderi. Oh, and Bob Prilovich. Also teacher Lynn Minard and classroom assistant Anne Munjen. And then to the standing ovation for the whole auditorium was the 50-year recognition of Judy Ropiat. So it was, it was nice. I thought it was important to recognize those that had been here for many years and reinforce the need for both. The, the new, fresh, excited and those who have lots of experience navigating through the building specifically as well as the field. So I wanted to make sure you folks don't hurt those names also. That'll do it for me for now.
I have a question.
Yep.
So for the buses, I know, but it's fresh in my mind, conveniently. So did we lose buses or combine routes?
We squeezed routes because we still don't have.
Right. Or drivers.
We definitely, if we had more drivers, we absolutely would have at least one more run. They are folk. They're legal, but they're folk. So, yeah, it will, and, and, and also, we're not down to zero drivers. We've got one who is a trainer slash driver that's not scheduled so that they're filling in and subbing. Cause otherwise, last year, your, your, Wendy drove 120 out of 180 days.
Which is not a safe situation.
It's not.
I can't get a hold of her for the adulation.
Exactly. So we, she did build routes, leaving one full-time driver out that is already covering for subs or doing, she's the trainer, so there are many things you can do on a day that there's not a sub. But if we had another one or two drivers and in the middle of the year, if we get one, we'll add one.
Okay, so ideally we need to one.
Yep. I think ideally, I think two, one would make life pretty comfortable. I'd ideally love to have another sub or two. We're rolling the dice saying we're only gonna have one out at any given day.
Right.
Just wanted, sorry, just wanted to ask.
It is still an area that we struggle with.
Okay. Any other questions for superintendent? No? Okay, so we are moving on to public access. Anyone? No? Okay, we're gonna close public access. Subcommittee reports.
Oh, but you want to do the rep, Tantascway rep?
Well, which is, which is really separate from the subcommittee. Your subcommittee would be negotiations. We haven't negotiated anything yet. And you should not be this year. No, I think we got them all. We got them all. You got a year off.
Sorry, I skipped.
Yeah. The Tantascway rep though, I think you're off the hook because I haven't met you.
Right. I didn't know if anybody, we had the joint committee last time, so.
Whichever, which most folks were at.
Yeah.
Favorite part of the evening?
Oh, Lord, okay.
So I know it looks daunting, but the first part we did way back in June, we went through on first reading. So I, I didn't have no, I've had no questions, challenges, or notes of changes from that night. If there are none that you all remember and I have forgotten, you could vote that unfinished business, BDF A dash E down to GDQC on second reading.
So just vote to approve how it's written?
Yeah.
Because some are rescined, some are amended, some are adopted. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, as presented would be fine. Second reading as presented is fine, one full swing.
So do I have a motion to approve policies? Well, someone else can do this. These policies as written and presented?
Karen will.
So you'll have to, okay, so you don't, she doesn't need to roll?
No, Karen will get it all.
Okay. So Jackie made the motion, grab a second. Second, Mary, you need a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, so now let's go, let's try to go through the new calendars. I'm gonna tell you right off the bat, I would like to put a hold on the first one, the mission statement. And the reason for that is twofold. A, if you recall, often the, the policies that we bring to you that have been vetted by the Tantascway bylaw policy have always said, we like to strip it of philosophical conversation and just, and this is nothing but.
Right.
It turns out, cause I did say to Jody, how did this even get past Stur, uh, Tantascway's bylaw? They voted this at the recommendation of MASC before we had our meeting in June where we all accepted a new mission vision document. So I think back in May or April, whenever they looked at this, they felt like they wanted to do what MASC suggests and have something that refers to your mission statement. So I'm going to suggest that you put a hold on it and we'll bring it back to you because the recommendation has been from another elementary committee last night, that we take a look at that document from June and see if that in its entirety comes here or the mission and the vision pieces, something that is more, more connected to our own district. If you're okay with that, let's just.
Yeah, I do have one, one comment on that, just that there is a separate policy that's in the Burgess policies that's Union 61's school district mission and goals. And wondered if we somehow.
Do you know what number, what letter that is?
ADA.
Okay. I will look at it by.
Maybe it's made both.
Which is interesting because the Tantascway folks, in theory, should never have to look at it. It wouldn't be on their book of business.
Right, so it's not on there, so it actually was last reviewed in 2004. So that was another question I had.
All right, let us pull those combined.
That don't go to them.
Yep, no, I will look at the two together, AD and ADA.
Okay.
Awesome. So then these others are, for the most part, housekeeping based on MASC's policies and making sure we cover all the legal language. And I don't know, Jackie, if you've hit on any that you have concerns with.
I know, I was, I was behind.
That's okay.
I don't have a ton, I have a few things.
And again, all of this stuff comes from, from MASC because we're on round two of going through them all. We have gone through it and now we're at where they say we should be. So ACA, you can see a little bit fleshing out up top of the legal definition to deal with sexual orientation and gender. That is it. Anything else there that you worry about?
Uh, just that that should also be added to the second paragraph. MASC has that same language included, the sexual orientation or gender identity.
Without regard to sex.
Oh, I see, I see.
Included.
Got it.
Otherwise.
Got it, okay. All right. Then you have ACAB, which there's some chunks in here that, I mean, it's a pretty lengthy policy anyway. It's one of the few policies that MASC and legal counsel strongly feels is worth repeating the law in the policy. Cause a lot of times it's, that's the law. We have to follow the law. Why do we need a policy for it? Sexual harassment is something that they think you should definitely repeat the law in the policy. Some people will go to policies first and let's make sure that's readily available. So they, this is MASC's recommendation based on their legal counsel on the things that we should strike and keep the majority of it. And it, you know, it's really, they, for the most part, anytime you get into the, but not limited to, becomes subjective, what are you gonna put in that listing and what are you not gonna put in it?
So my only comment on that one is we have Tantascway at the top.
Yep, that's one.
And I don't know if we leave, if we reference school district or just Sturbridge school.
We do Sturbridge school district because you really are a district. You are a single school district, but you are a district.
Okay, that's fine. It just, there was a lot of district throughout. Oh, you also have Tantascway on the last page as well.
Yep. Yep. The logo is extra I's. Then we are on, again, their recommendation on member authority, which is really just sticking with the narrative as opposed to getting into individual lines or bullets with one pronoun change in the middle there.
So MASC leads the duties, but this is part of Tantascway not wanting.
No, this is MASC strikes the duties.
They don't.
Oh, then, then. The, the subcommittee suggested not. I think they felt it was probably, was not all-inclusive, which is typical. So your call.
I have no concerns.
No, I, I just was like comparing. I don't think that MASC leaves it. I don't feel strongly about keeping it or not.
Then if no one feels strongly and we can keep it the same for six districts, that'd be awesome. BBBA slash BBBB, I don't really know why they numbered them both. I can't find record of having two separate policies, but somewhere in the past, there were probably two policies that had been combined, which is why that combined letter. But these are, the bolding in the end here is adding what we've been living with for a while, which is the reminder of the conflicted interest training requirements.
Just so we have repeating language, the same, you have a his, her in the second paragraph.
Oh, in the second, yep, yep. Mine was just going there, yep.
And then we have the Tantascway regional school district regional agreement source.
Okay, yep. No, exactly. It's not relevant to me.
And then just recommending that we can move national law 3923B because that is about the right to attend public schools in the town where you live. It wasn't listed on MASC.
Okay.
I'm not sure why it was there.
Been there probably for 20 years, right? Okay, great, thank you. EG goes into your policy development and adoption, which should closely mirror what we do and what we have been doing in a more succinct way. Then what we really actually have been doing, before and before is when we're developing new ones, this is our commitment to continue to re, revise, review and revise. I would say review and revise as opposed to revise or review, but that's semantics too. CHCA, which in my head, I feel like I've seen recently.
No, it's already on the list. We're already voting.
Oh, okay.
So you can just get rid of that one.
Perfect. And then we did not print for you, but again, we list here those that were reviewed and the recommendation is no changes. We will list them again next month in case you have the opportunity to look at them online and decide you would like something changed on them, you have them already. Okay?
Only one.
Okay.
Just the non-discrimination policy, and I can give you this.
AC?
AC. Just to try to be consistent with MASC language in terms of the protected groups, like MASC lists a whole bunch that we don't have listed. I can give you these. And then MASC, last year we had also included when it said race, there was a star and that included that line at the bottom of race to include traits.
Yeah, the traits, yep.
I don't know if we want to be consistent and include that here so I can. You want to look at this or anybody wants to look at it? So this is the Burgess on.
Yeah.
And then those are the things that they list.
So there are things that MASC has.
MASC highlighted in this. Yeah, MASC lists a lot more.
Okay. All right, yep, no, we'll, we'll bring you a revised one next month.
And then on this.
Thank you. Yep, great. So I would suggest, don't, don't vote at all on all of that reviewed stuff. We will bring AC back to you. You don't need to vote on the ones that are reviewed and not changed. I would recommend a vote for ACA through BGC with, on first reading with amendments as discussed. And I think that would.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve policies ACA through BGC with amendments as discussed? Jackie made the motion, do I have a second? Second. Mary, second. Is any discussion? All in favor? Awesome. Okay, and we move to this one. And now we are on to House Bill 3567.
Right. So we did, and, and at Mary's request and fully support, think it's a good idea to talk a little bit. You've probably all, did you all individually get emails as MAS? Cause.
Yes.
Emails have been flooded about the rural aid bill. They have gone out to school committee members, superintendents, students. I've gotten emails from students involved in some of the efforts. So I have certainly supported the bill as a superintendent. Mary, you wanted to, you know, talk about what you could, should do to further support it as school committee members.
Thank you. I appreciate that opportunity. And I've been in correspondence with Jessica Corwin, who's the chair of the Sunderland School Committee, who is very actively encouraging this, of course. And we have a few of our members who decided to sign, which is, which is great. And of course, it's your prerogative to choose not to. That's fine. I do encourage, as me and myself, as a person, I encourage you to consider signing because this can make a big difference. The definition of rural is complicated, but this, this I think, speaking as myself, goes further to try to.
Thank you.
Make this more clear so that Sturbridge is included in these things. There's some great websites with more information. We see here the broad legislative effort of different representatives from across central Western Mass who are really, and, and the Cape and Islands because it affects them as well. So it's a good idea, I think, and I, we'll see where it goes.
So I just passed, I know there were options for you as individual support. I as superintendent supported. This is a sample template if you choose, which I won't recommend or not, I don't feel strongly, it's, it's your choice. If you as a committee would like to say, we as the Sturbridge Committee want to support, this is one of the templates that came out in some of the emails that I certainly would have no problem putting on our district letterhead and, and having Sam as the chair sign. If you all would like that and want to take that vote to have that letter done, that's the one more piece we could do.
I think, if I may speak to that, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I signed a letter of support as a committee member. But at this point, I would entertain a motion for our administration to draft a letter or to use a template from this committee to support the House Bill 3567.
So moved?
Anyone want a second? Jackie? Is there any discussion?
I just have one question that I couldn't find the answer to, just in terms of the description of rural school district. I know you said we like barely qualify. So do we know what our student density is?
I can look and it changes, it changes every single time you have another student. And again, it goes by density and student in a household. So a student could move out of the household and all of a sudden change things. Or a new household could have students that previously didn't. It's a moving target for sure.
And in my day job, we look at this quite a bit and this, the federal government, no matter who the administration is, they change it all the time. And so it just got updated again through the Census Department. So the Census has their, we have, looking at it, Department that federally has a way. And then there's like town versus rural, but it gets really strange. This definition would be helpful.
Yeah. Well, and I will, and in my opinion, your bigger interests other than rural aid, because you, again, you haven't qualified for much. I'm not sure, knowing, you know, how Sturbridge is right now, I don't know that that will change, that the formulas don't really change. But there's other things in here that you certainly want to get behind. You want to get behind the effort to make sure you keep, they keep funding Circuit Breaker. And, and transportation is interesting because you as a committee are not too worried about the regional transportation reimbursement, but you are as a Sturbridge resident because Tantascway getting that regional transportation is very important when you're sitting there at town meeting and you have a Burgess line item and a Tantascway operation and a Tantascway transportation. You want that to be as little as possible so we can get our elementary budget.
That was, if I may jump in, that issue about gasoline and transportation came up at that MASC conference that I went to this summer. came up at the MASC conference that I went to this summer. Thank you again for supporting me to go to that, lots of interesting things I learned.
Awesome.
But the Plymouth folks, lovely people, were mad as all get out to use my Midwestern...
Yes.
I'm sure that's why you say New England after fifteen years, I haven't found it. Because they don't qualify for this, but they have a huge district geographically. They spend a lot of money on gasoline. This would help us. And it would also allow recognition for some of the unique challenges. And you look at this wide variety of, of folks, there are many challenges coming to Central and Western Mass and Cape and Islands that is not getting the volume that it needs to be heard in Boston, 'cause they're just so loud.
Right.
But this would allow, like, almost a coalition to be recognized. And politically, that would really help us. So, the definition would be somewhat more solidified. And then things like gasoline or access to resources, it would allow us to be recognized for the challenges that do face us. Were those of us are outside of Worcester or Boston?
It, it is an ongoing, it's been going on for twenty years. When you talk to your legislators, they, they're often duking it amount out, because you've got, some represent the rurals. The urbans can't even understand or comprehend that. But they have different issues.
They have a Venture Test 495.
They are typically, exactly, they are typically louder, figuring numbers. So, the rural plight is, is a real thing. And here we are in public education, unfortunately, we need help figuring out. I, I get, especially the farther out west, I mean, we're right on that edge. You go farther out west and there's no way kids are getting educated unless they have at least an hour and a half bus ride, which is crazy, but there's still a legal obligation to educate these kids and how else do you do it?
Right.
So, yeah, it, it is, it's the rural plight. It's certainly been going for quite a while and, and seems to have more teeth than it has in my years. And again, even if you get very little rural aid, at this point in time, our neighbors who do get a chunk of rural aid, I've not been able to use that part of their budget process, 'cause I don't know it for sure. So, when we're building a budget, I sit here and hope and pray we're gonna get rural aid. But if we knew and it was finally factored into somehow that Jack 70 formula, it would certainly be much easier for us to build budgets planning on it than sitting here in October saying, okay, great, I'm glad we got it, because we have a tuition problem, but in a year that we don't, we're like, okay, what do we do with it? So, absolutely, I'm sorry if I interrupted, there's a motion and I'd be happy to do that letter. Did they all in favor, sorry? Oh, then I went on and on when you could've been gone two minutes ago. So sorry.
Does anyone else have any comments on that or anything?
Still, we're still here.
No. All right, so then this is, do I have a motion to... Someone wants to do it? Jackie made the motion, do I have a second? Jenna, any discussion, all in favor?
Not bad, it was very, there was some, oh, items here, nice. Very nice, thank you all.